This meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, January 8th, 2019 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Mark Schlusner, our clerk, to administer the oath of office to our newly elected and re-elected board members. Ms. Amundson, Ms. Nathan, Ms. Workman, will you join me in front of the board table for the oath of office?
Hello? Please repeat after me. I state your name, do solemn affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Elizabeth Nathan, do solemn affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Uphold the Code of Ethics of the Rochester School Board.
Uphold the Code of Ethics of the Rochester School Board.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of school board members of Rochester Public School District 535.
Of school board members of Rochester Public School District 535.
According to the law and the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the law and the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations. Welcome to the board.[105.82][105.82][applause]
Ms. Edgar, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson, here. Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Ms. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. Schlusner.
Here.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand as we are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is one change. Item 4.04, approval of paying agent, has been removed from the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. 2.02, reorganization of the school board. This is an action item. We will be electing four school board officials. At this time, I will take nominations from the board for chair, but as the current chair, I take prerogative and I would like to nominate for chair, vice-chair, current vice-chair, Don Barlow. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? We don't need to vote on this, but I think it would be a nice thing to do. All in favor of Don Barlow for chair, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Next, I will take nominations from the board for vice-chair. Ms. Workman.
I nominate Ms. Seelinger.
Ms. Seelinger. Any other nominations for vice-chair?
I'd like to nominate Director Schlusner.
Any other nominations for vice-chair? We will vote then, and majority of the vote out of the quorum wins. All those in favor of Deborah Seelinger for vice-chair, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Mark Schlusner for vice-chair, say aye.
Aye.
Majority of the ayes are for Deborah Seelinger. Congratulations, Ms. Seelinger. Now, I will take nominations from the board for clerk. Ms. Workman.
I nominate Director Nathan.
Other nominations? Other nominations for clerk? And let's vote for clerk, too. All those in favor of Kathy Nathan for clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Nathan. Finally, nominations from the board for treasurer.
Somebody else can do something.
I see your hand. I'm just waiting to see if we have others who want to get in on this. Ms. Workman.
I nominate Director Schlusner for treasurer.
Other nominations? Any other nominations? All those in favor of Mark Schlusner for treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Mr. Schlusner. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Don Barlow as its chair for a term of one year effective at the end of the meeting on January 8th, 2019, and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Deborah Seelinger as its vice-chair for a term of one year effective at the end of the meeting on January 8th, 2019, and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Kathy Nathan? It's so hard to remember. As its clerk for a term of one year effective at the end of the meeting on January 8th, 2019, and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Mark Schlusner as its treasurer for a term of one year effective at the end of the meeting on January 8th, 2019. Congratulations to our new.
We have to vote.
I need, thank you.
Move approval.
Someone needs to second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to accept this slate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now I congratulate the new officers.[433.62][433.62][applause] And you know, I don't, this isn't on the agenda. I don't know if I can do it now, but I'm just going to do it anyway. Just take up executive privilege here. In addition to our four new officers and the new board members, we have another person who sits at this table every meeting, who often, almost never says anything, at the meetings at least, but who is an incredibly important part of this board. Ms. Wendy Edgar has been our Assistant Board Clerk for a very long time. She's been a member of this district for about 30 years. As new members, board members quickly find out, she is smart, she is knowledgeable, she is experienced, and as those who become board chairs quickly find out, she is indispensable. She is wise beyond her years. She helps keep us, especially me, organized. I don't know what I would have done without her support, without her guidance, and we can't give expensive gifts.
I'm going to add one thing, and that is she keeps us all out of jail, or at least me.
But, so it's not like hamster or anything. Anyway, Wendy, thank you so much. And under normal circumstances, Wendy would have been kicking my left leg, saying, "You can't do that. You can't do that. It's not on the agenda." But she didn't kick me this time. Anyway, thank you. Thank you. 2.03, Policy 209, Code of Ethics. This is an annual review, and it's important for the board to know and for everybody to know that every year, it is required that the board review our ethics policy. There are really important tenants in there that board members have to understand and must abide by. Do any of you on the board have questions or comments you'd like to make about this policy? I know you've all reread it.
I have one question.
Yes.
Is this the only time during the year that we have the chance to review it, or does it come under review as part of the regular review of policies?
Well, we do review it every year, and typically, we don't review other policies more than once. If there's an issue, we can certainly discuss it then, but it's required that we look at this one every year, and I think it's really, really important that we do. Thank you. Okay. There was that discussion. 3.01, recognitions. Mr. Munoz.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to introduce Michael Rozek and his leadership team from the First Alliance Credit Union, and they have a check. We always like to receive checks, but this is kind of a really special check, then I'll let him talk to you about why he's giving us this big check.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. Purpose of this visit, of course, is to present the Rochester Public Schools with a check for $8,500, and one of the reasons for that is the fact that we celebrated our 85th anniversary this past year in 2018, and one of our objectives was, was to commit to 85 acts of service to the community throughout the entire year. We actually did over 100, and so, but at the end of the year, my staff came to me and said, "We've got to do one more thing that's really special and a big bang," and they came up with the idea of funding the, those families that I'm told were helping over 300 families make up a deficit in their school lunch program. And so, again, that's part of what we do, and so it gives me a lot of pleasure, gives our staff a lot of pleasure, to continue to give back to the community. That's part of what we do as an organization and the credit union, and so, again, this is, you know, I think it's fabulous, and we can't be happier to be able to do this for those families and for the schools and stuff. So, again, we're, you know, very, very grateful to be here and have the opportunity to present this check to the Rochester Public Schools. So, thank you for that opportunity, and again, we're very, very pleased to be able to do this, so.
Yeah, we could get a picture. Sherry, I saw Sherry. Where's Sherry? Do you want to come up? Get in the picture with them? Appreciate it. Yeah, before I go on to the other announcement, again, thank you, and this is something that is very special, and, you know, there's a variety of reasons why some of our families are unable to pay their lunch accounts, and this will definitely help many families with that issue, so thank you very much. At this time, I would like to recognize the male high school varsity bowling team, and I'm going to have Marlis Onstad, the head coach, and I think going to introduce players and other coaches as well.
Thank you very much for the opportunity for us to be here today. I will tell you right now that I'm extremely, extremely proud of my team and what they did. I am going to introduce the team, and I would like them to, like, raise their hand and let you know which one's which. Mike Bioc, he is holding the trophy. He is a senior. Cody Gertz is not here. He is a senior. Both of them have been on the team for six years. Michael Pis has been on for five years, and he's also a senior. Aza Moore is co-captain, and she's holding our plaque, and she's been on the team for five years, and she's a junior. Robert Dawson is a sophomore and has been on the team for four years, and Jared Deluge joined our team this year and is a freshman. Now, in order to win this, we first had to win the conference, and we did that by taking the three matches we did, we took them in three games. That's the least amount of games you could do. When we went to state, after the first 10 games, we were in 10th place. After the next six, which was the next round, we were in first place, and we never lost another game. So, I am so, so proud of the team, and I thank you all for recognizing us, and could we have a picture with you?
Sure.
Because I want you to know that the State Bowling Proprietors Association with the high school bowling would like to have a picture, some pictures of us here with the school board, because they think this is really, really special, and so do I. So. And I did forget, I did forget to mention that we have our two assistant coaches here, Mike Littlefield and his son, Aaron Littlefield.[987.14][988.94][applause] Okay. Let's get a couple of people down here.
At this time, could, we also have the parents of these state champions stand up and welcome
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Nice job. I know somebody that might, they'll take care of that for you.
No, you don't have to do that. I did give you guys all a sheet of paper with some information on it, and that particular piece of information is on there.
Okay. I'll take care of that for you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
3.02, 2018-2019 School Board Committee Assignment Updates. Any board members want to update us on the work you've been doing in your committees in the last few weeks? Mr. Schlusner?
Just short update, since we have a much longer update later from the Facilities Task Force, going to have a good update tonight on the survey questions going out to the community. A lot of good discussion at the committee. Looking forward to hearing what the board feels as well.
Thank you. Yes?
Family engagement met this morning. Every other month, that group does an ed camp style, and so we had three tables to learn about different things going on in the district. We got to hear about some special ed things, some plans for our VIE celebration at the end of the year, and also got to talk about report cards and grading, and it was a good opportunity for those in attendance to hear about different parts of the district and what's going on on the administrative side.
Yes?
I attended the AMSD Legislative Preview. AMSD is the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, of which we are a member, and their education preview consisted of several superintendents who spoke a little bit about their programs. One of the things that came out from that to me was ensuring equity and excellence for all students is the most pressing issue in education today, and that's from Reimagine Minnesota, and with our continuing emphasis on equity, I thought that was particularly important to mention. In addition, we had a number of legislators who were there. I had the opportunity to talk with Senator Nelson briefly afterwards and reminded her of the issues that Rochester Public School has with the cross subsidy of special education, which is the part of special education that the state does not pay for. And I believe the legislature has gotten the message pretty loud and clear, and we hope that they will continue to work on it. Not loud and clear from me, but loud and clear from school boards and superintendents across the state.
Mr. Barlow?
Sure. I just wanted to commend the high level of parent activism we have within the district, have the opportunity to attend the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee along with the superintendent and Director Marvin, and just continue to be impressed with the level of passion, willingness to serve, and to be engaged. That rings true also with the Los Patres Spanish Emergent Parent Group, who similarly have that same vein of compassion and commitment, and look forward to other parents, communities coming forward to become involved and engaged.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, 4.0, consent agenda. Are there any items here that you'd like removed for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 5.01, Facilities Task Force. Oh, sorry. Thanks, Wendy. See?
Yes, at this time, I would like to recognize three of our employees that are retiring that were just approved into consent. The first one is Jean Murphy, and I don't see her. Okay. Jean Murphy currently is serving as principal on special assignment here at the Edison Building. Her retirement is effective at the end of the school year, June 28th, 2019. Ms. Murphy has served in the district for 39 years. Most recently, as principal on special assignment, and prior to that, when I came, she was the principal at Ben Franklin Elementary. The other retirement is a paraprofessional, Doris Amundson, special ed paraprofessional at Century High School. Retirement effective at the end of the day, January 31st, 2019, and she has been with the district 40 years. And then the last one on the non-scheduled retirement is Carol Carroll, licensed practitioner nurse at the district-wide level. Her retirement is effective at the end of the day, December 31st, which is past. She has been with the district for eight years, so we want to congratulate those three on their retirement and thank them for their service. And one more thing which I would like to do, which is not on the agenda either, since that's, tonight's the night to do that, I understand, I would like to call Chair Marvin to the podium, please.
I am not responsible for whatever you're going to blame me for.
I know.
Save for next meeting. Don can deal with it.
I would like to, before I hand the plaque and read what's on, I would like to thank Jean for her leadership here at the district as board chair this past year, and I would say I've appreciated a couple of things. The first one is your willingness to take on a leadership role as a board chair in a couple, I would just say, really intense emotional situations, working with a couple of groups that we are currently working with, and your willingness to take that on and to say, "Yep, I'll take the blame, I'll take the heat for the district," and kind of took the heat off me, so I appreciated that very much. But the other thing I really want to thank you for, and I will say this, this is from my perspective, over the years that you've been on the board, that I really have appreciated your focus on governance and really trying to assist the board in keeping that focus on their role as a board member in the area of governance, and, you know, as a superintendent, it's challenging because it's not, it's challenging for a superintendent to manage the board in the area of governance, because they're my bosses. So, it's nice when the board chair takes that responsibility on and really talks to those individuals about what is their role as a board member, and, you know, I've said this many times, that I've been on many boards, never on a school board, but I think school board is probably the most challenging board to be on, because it's so misunderstood by individuals on what your role is and responsibilities, but I've appreciated your focus on governance. So, on behalf of Rochester Public Schools, we'd like to present you this plaque. It says, "Appreciation to Jean Marvin for outstanding service as school board chair, January 2018 to January 2019." So, congratulations and thank you.[1530.94][1530.94][applause]
This is better than that gift that Wendy got, so. I mean, we're not, it's not competition.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Ah, let's see. Moving on to the consent agenda. I've been doing this all year. You'd think I could get it. Right, we are on 5.01, Facilities Task Force update.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to invite Sue Peterson from School Perceptions, and she's going to give you some information on the survey that we have been working on with the task force, and she'll be joined by Kevin Holm from LHB. And I'm going to turn it over to Sue right away.
Great. Thank you.
And Mark, co-chair of the task force, will also be joining us.
Great. Good evening. Well, our goal today, I think, is to go over the eight-page survey that is hopefully, this is a near-final draft, so we've been working for months and months with your committee and with your team, so our goal, if you remember the end result, what's going to happen, I've got samples from other districts, but the end result is that our process is that an eight-page paper survey, specific for your district, will land in every residential household within the district, and so folks will have an opportunity to become educated on the needs of the district, as well as to provide feedback on their thoughts, feelings, and give us a sense of their tax tolerance. So, when you look at the survey, that first page is that opening letter, and then the inside kind of is the nuts and bolts of the goals of the district and measures tax tolerance, and then that back page is a mailing panel. So, we'll go through each page, just so you have a sense, it was in your packet, so you've had an opportunity to probably look at it in advance of tonight. I know we did receive some feedback today that our team tomorrow will go through. There were some suggestions, so we will take those into consideration as we do a final draft. Just so you know, the timing of this, our goal is that by the end of the day tomorrow, that there will be a draft that is sent off to print, so the process then, after tomorrow, is it takes about two weeks for it to be printed and get into the postal service and land in mailboxes, so early February is a goal for when it will land in mailboxes. Survey will close the end of February, and then I'll be back with you in March to give you the results and let you know the thoughts and feelings of your community. In addition to it landing in mailboxes, all parents and employees will receive an email invitation to take the survey, so we'll be working with the district to get those email addresses. So, again, it's an odd, we're just looking for an easy opportunity to connect with folks. That said, and without further ado, let's go ahead and look at the survey. So, that opening letter is really a setup to let folks know, you do have probably members of your community that haven't been as connected to this process as you have. So, again, it says, "In the Rochester Public Schools, we work hard every day to fulfill our mission to inspire, challenge, empower all students with the knowledge and skills required to reach their full potential, to contribute to future generations, and to become involved members of a global community. As a result, our experience, our students are experiencing success both in and out of the classroom. Our work is not done alone. We're thankful for the support that parents, community members, and local businesses provide to our students." Our work is not done alone. We're thankful for the support that parents, community members, and local businesses provide to our students." So again, just kind of a setup there. And while our focus will always be to provide exceptional opportunities for our students, we also need to develop a plan too. So address overcrowding in our elementary and middle schools, increase school safety, and improve educational support spaces at the middle and high school. To help accomplish this goal, a Facilities Task Force was formed in June of 2018. This group, made up of parents, business leaders, community members, school board members, and district staff, has been working closely with architects, construction managers, and other consultants to review growth projections as well as the needs of each of our schools. Together, this group has developed the options presented in this survey. Ultimately, you, the Board of Education, is committed to finalizing a plan that reflects the priorities of our taxpayers and meets the needs of our students and staff. Therefore, we're asking you to take a few minutes to complete this survey. And it discloses that you're working with us. We're an independent firm that does this every day. And that all of the data comes back to us at School Perceptions, and it ensures respondents anonymity. So then in the box, it explains to folks how they can take the survey. So they can go to the website there at Feedback 2000. So we've built a proprietary survey website platform. Underneath it will be a one-time-use 16-digit alphanumeric code that they will type in, and it'll give them an opportunity to take the survey. This ensures data integrity, so folks that love you and want to support all kinds of things can take the survey once. And those who maybe aren't as interested in supporting all the projects can also take the survey only once. So then the other option is for folks to fill it out pen and paper. They'll mail it back. There's a business reply envelope that's included in the survey. It'll come back to our home office in Slinger, Wisconsin. People ask tonight where that is, so near Milwaukee. And we've got a team of folks that will enter those surveys in. And then again, one survey is mailed to every household. So if there's additional surveys that are needed for households, so if other adults in the household want to take the survey, additional access codes and paper surveys will be at the district office. And there's a phone number provided that folks can call, and they'll take care of that. Like I said, we'll want all surveys completed by February 22nd. So you've got about 20-some days to complete the survey. And then I'll be back with you on March 5th to go over the results and kind of give a sense of where we believe, based on our experiences, your community is at. And we've had this sign from Michael. Questions or feedback on page one? All right.
So, yes, I was just thinking when I saw Board of Education on there about how, I guess, I don't, I asked communications for this one. We're referred to as Rochester School Board.
Yep, so I think, did you have that in the notes from, yep, so what I'll do is I'll go through and we'll make a global change.
Okay.
Yep, good feedback. Thank you. All right, moving on to page two. So we collect some respondent information. We want to know the age. We want to ensure that folks live within the district. We ask what municipality they reside. And then we're going to give a map and say, you know, tell us what quadrant of the district you're in. I know you also did provide some feedback on the quadrant, so we'll make some adjustments to that map as well. The reason we ask these questions of respondents is it allows us to ensure that all segments of your community are accurately represented. So we look at census data and make sure that we've got a good breakout of your community. It also allows us to kind of slice and dice the data and look specifically at folks of various different subgroups to see if there's support, or perhaps they have questions on different pieces of the project. It'll help guide you as we give some recommendations of the needs of the community. So we're going to look at if they're employees of the district, so we ask if you work for the district. We're also going to ask if they have school-aged children that attend the district. So again, when I come back and visit with you, I'm going to disaggregate your data into three mutually exclusive groups. We're going to look at your employees and their feelings. We're going to look at your customers, your parents. And then we'll look at your general citizens. So those are folks we call our non-parent, non-staff. So I don't work for the school district and I don't have kids in the district. But in essence, that group of your community makes up the majority of folks at the polls. So we want to look critically at that group.
I have a quick question about the map. So that little bit that sticks out above northeast, is that part of Wabashaw County, or is that part of Olmsted County?
I was just going to suggest that perhaps that piece actually be labeled as well as the other four quadrants are labeled.
Good feedback.
Since I kind of had to figure out where I live on this map.
Okay.
I think that might be helpful.
Perfect. All right. Good, good feedback. All right. Then we do, we do ask one additional question regarding communications. So we want to say, how would you like to receive information from the district? And again, I think we've gotten some feedback from someone on, you know, some suggestions for that. But again, our goal is to, when we're connecting with the community, to say that it's important to us to make sure you know the day-to-day happenings of the district. And so it's just an opportunity for us to gather that information.
Ms. Seelinger had a question.
Yeah, sorry, I wrote a note and I can't read it, so go ahead.
Ms. Anderson?
My concern with how would you like to receive information was it sounds like if you then checked that, you'd begin receiving it?
Okay.
Is it, is it an offer? Is it a how do you receive?
Right, so we, the reason when we sometimes would ask how do you, and then how would you, so when we have more space in some surveys. But in essence, we want to say going forward, what are some ways you'd like to receive information to guide communication?
Yeah, I like that. So let's say several years down the road, you're back doing this again. You can refer back to the state and say, oh, we need to do a better job of communicating this way in the future. Because then if we come back five, 10 years now to do it again, maybe we've addressed that and educated those who don't have kids in our system, based on what we learned from them, that they'd like to get information this way.
My concern was that it said, would you like to, like it's an offer. And then one of the choices was district mailings. And I wouldn't want somebody then to become angry that they didn't get put on a mailing list when they returned the survey, not realizing it was going to the survey company instead of to the district. Would it mean the same thing to you if it said, in what ways do you like to or prefer to?
That's a good suggestion, so we can do a prefer.
Minor point.
Yep, nope. Good feedback. Mr. Barlow?
So Sue, would it be appropriate to perhaps share the expertise your company represents? How many districts you have been actively supporting and successfully conducting surveys for? That may potentially alleviate, at least in my mind, some of the questions I may have. If what is presented is tried and proven, then it's much easier for me to kind of manage my personal preferences. So could you, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, we've been in business since 2002 doing surveys. We've done over 500 surveys for the sake of referendum planning, so in situations just like this. In addition, about 10,000 surveys for school districts that are student, staff, and parent surveys. So we've worked all over the country, in all 50 states. We do a significant amount of work in the Midwest. Our data is highly predictive. So the survey really has two purposes. One is to educate. The second is to gather data. So our philosophy really is that we believe that citizens are more likely to support a plan, that they've had some sort of a voice in creating. So again, we're not here to advocate for anything. We've really taken the work of your task force, and we've put it into simple terms. I always say we try to write it in such a way that my grandma would understand it, walk you through, like how did you get to this dollar amount? Let people weigh in yes or no throughout each of the pieces. And then we have some methodology to the tax tolerance piece that with a high degree of predictability, we can say, here's your community's tax tolerance. For example, in November, we had 48 questions that were on the ballot, and all 48 questions were successful. So in Minnesota and Wisconsin. Now, does that mean that we're a pro-referendum company? Absolutely not. Does it mean that I stood in front of school boards that wanted larger projects? And I said, nope, your tax tolerance is really this, and you're going to need to move to some phasing and do these projects first, or there's other projects that your community won't support? Definitely. So really, the role of the board after I visit with you in March is to say, okay, here's the data from the survey. Do we think, you know, do we believe it? And again, we've been doing this for 16 years, and we can listen to the data and go with it. And in some cases, districts have said, no, I think, I think our community will support more. And so Beloit Turner in Wisconsin, a year ago, had, I stood in front of a group that wasn't so excited with the fact that I said your tax tolerance was this. And I said, even at that amount, it's a squeaker, meaning that it was about a, you know, you were just right at that 50% line. But I thought they had support. I think we told them 25 million. They went out for 26.9 and they lost by three votes. So again, we told them they were tight at 25. They went a little bit more. So again, high degree of predictability. Over the years, we could say, you know, as we go back through each election cycle, our data, again, highly, highly predictable. Other things that impact, again, you know, if the board listens to the data, we can't control that. Our goal is really just to say, here's where your community is at. Take it or leave it. Other things are unanimous board voting in support of, you know, whatever questions end up on the ballot. We had another project where we had given them a, you know, here's, here's where your community is at. The board voted all unanimously, and then two days later, two board members came out and supported the no group. So again, I don't think we can count those as unsuccessful projects. But again, data that's highly, highly predictive, if a board listens to the data.
Thank you. Ms. Workman?
So I'm going to give you two compliments. Don't look so surprised, Kevin. He's used to me asking questions. So some things that I think are really helpful in terms of just giving information to the public. Do you live in the Rochester Public School District? People generally do not have an idea of the extent of the reach of our district. And as I'm looking through these, I'm going, really? That township goes here? Okay. And then the second one is along the same line with communication, which not only asks them, how would you like to receive communication, but also informs the public. This is what we are already doing for communication, and I think both of those things are very important. So I appreciate the fact that you included them.
Yep, so it's a soft touch, especially with the social media pieces, that, oh, I didn't realize the district had a Twitter. There I can go. So again, exactly what we've done. Another piece that you just brought up, as far as do you live in the district? Like I said, all parents and employees are going to have an invitation to take the survey. It's likely that you have people that work for you that don't live within the district. We'll ask them to take the survey because we want them to become educated. We also want them to feel that they have a voice. But as we, when I return with the data, we will look at resident respondents. So we'll be able to look at all of your data, but again, we'll have some data that we'll just talk about resident respondents. Additionally, know that after we've got all the data, we'll open up our website portal so that you all will have access to the backend of the software. So you can sit home at night, and I'm not liable for how much time you spend on the portal, that all of a sudden you say, I wonder what those folks in the township of this, how they felt about everything. And you can disaggregate that data and take a look at it, and it becomes very interesting. It's not unlike uncommon for a superintendent to call or send an email early in the morning and say, yikes, I was on it till 2:00 a.m. And then I typically say, remember when I said I wasn't liable? It's a little addictive, so once you start digging through your data. All right, moving on, page three. Oh, one more, sorry.
Good question. So along with the note of the portal being open, is that open to the whole public? Or what is the scope of when you say it is open?
So we'll give you all access to the data to be able to do the disaggregation. Certainly, if a citizen wants to come in and access that.
Sure, I was thinking more for to hopefully a vote yes-type organization, so.
Yep, so the district will have it, and they can, you can choose how you want to share that, yep, that information, certainly.
Thank you. So two questions on my list that I can actually read. One is, who, if you are a parent in the district, a family in the district, do you know who it will go to? As usually we get things that go to the first person that's put in. So sometimes it might be the male, sometimes it's a female. Doesn't really matter, or will it say resident of?
Yep, so it's going to say resident of because you were not pulling your mailing address from your district list.
Got it.
We're pulling the mailing address through a USPS piece that'll go to everyone. As far as the emails that will come out, those will be the addresses that the district pulls, and most likely they'll do first and second person.
Okay, super. And then my follow-up was, is there a preferred way? And I'm thinking about credit cards of all things, but you know, a small business, sometimes they have to run their own credit cards. It costs them more. Is it advantageous for people to do it online versus in the mail? Does that?
Yep, it's, I mean, it's a benefit to the district if they do it online. And you'll see probably, I would anticipate probably 70% of your respondents will use the online option. They can do it, you know, again, you're just going to that site, typing in the number. But some folks do like to just sit pen and paper, and I can tell you when this came from my district, my husband was just loving.
That'd be me, too.
You liked the paper. Okay, thank you.
Yep, good questions. One more, go ahead.
And overall, will the survey paper look like what's in front of us?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
And so the font and the eight pages and all that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and I can kind of, and it's a bit of, I mean, we err on clarity and not a high degree of graphic design very intentionally. All right, ready for page three? So we wanted to give some planning background. Again, this is a bit of that education piece I talked about. The strategy of how this page is written. So we've got the non-readers that are going to look at a graph and a table, and they're going to move right on. We've got other people that are going to look at headings that are bolded and move right on. And then we have folks that are going to actually read everything. So again, you kind of, the design, there's a very intentional way that this is written. But we just let folks know that your task force, as they were looking to solution, identified the following issues as the most pressing facing the district. So enrollment growth. In the past five years, enrollment in the district has increased by more than 1,000 students. So you had a community growth and housing study conducted by Cooperative Strategies. Reports that the district will experience significant housing development over the next five years, including an additional 4,000 to 6,000 multi- and single-family units. So you've already heard that information. We're sharing it with your folk community one more time. And as a result, enrollment is projected to increase by 1,200 students. So we give a little history of where you've been and the fact that you've already experienced some growth. Next, we're going to talk about your capacity. District is currently operating near capacity. Based on enrollment projections, the district will be operating over capacity at the elementary and middle school levels in two years. This will require additional classroom space as well as educational support areas, such as cafeterias and gyms. It's important to note that it would take three years after a bond referendum is approved before construction is completed and space is available for students. So we want your citizens to know that you've, we've got a, we've got a capacity need and something we need to act on now. That's why we're here. From a safety and security standpoint, the safety of our students and staff is a top priority. Some of our school's main entrances need to be redesigned to better monitor and control visitor access. This would require all visitors to be routed through the main office before gaining access to the rest of the school. Many schools' door locking systems also need to be updated to remotely monitor all entrances. And emergency alarm systems need to be replaced to meet Americans with Disability Act code requirements. And then finally, you've got some outdated support spaces. So there are a number of support areas that need to be updated in our middle and high schools. Some of the district's pools have outlived their service life, while others are in need of updates. The sound and lighting systems in the high schools' auditoriums are in need of replacement, and outdoor athletic spaces need updating. Okay, so again, a broad view of kind of those four main needs that you've identified with some following facts. So in order to secure funding to address these needs, Rochester School District voters need to approve a bond referendum. It's a little bit of an education piece there for folks that may not realize that. And then a bit of a softball question of what advice would you give the board? Okay, and this is here intentionally at this point in the survey, because we want, in essence, to capture the reader, right? I don't know. What should we do? So sometimes folks will skip this question and come back to it. Others might say, I don't know, maybe explore a bond, or I'm undecided. But again, it's very intentional where this is in the survey to get people just thinking like, oh, they're asking about a bond, I need to know more. So that finishes page three. So that finishes page three. So we flipped, so we call this the centerfold, so four and five of the survey. And we let folks know that really, we've come up with a recommended base plan. So we have a lot of different projects, but we have said that after reviewing enrollment projections, facility assessments, and listening to the feedback at four community meetings, the facilities task force is recommending the following base plan. And we've got all the reports listed that you've already had are on the website, so folks that really want to read more can go there. So first is, we need to build a new elementary school on district-owned land. This project would build a two-story school in the northwest portion of the district to serve 720 students in kindergarten through fifth grade. And it's going to include classrooms and support areas with flexible space for small group instruction, student collaboration, and project-based learning, dedicated cafeteria, single-court gym, and a stage for performances, sufficient parking, and proper separation of pedestrians and vehicle-bus traffic, and energy-efficient systems and natural lighting. So we believe that, Kevin claims that that new elementary school is going to cost $33 million. We let folks know kind of where it's going to sit on a map, so your general citizens that go, "Where would this new school be?", they can see that. And we ask a yes/no question as far as, would you support a referendum that provides funding to build a new school at the elementary as described above?
I have just a quick question about that, and I know you've done this 1,000 times before.
Yep.
But when I'm reading that, and I say, "So it's going to cost $33 million," my knee-jerk reaction might be to say, "Boy, that's a lot of money. I don't know that I can support that." You have the chart, you know, after a few more slides that said, "Guess what? Even if you vote yes for all of these, it's only going to increase your taxes this much."
Yep.
Do you ever have people who say, "No, no, no, no," and then they get to, "Oh, for me, it's only going to raise my taxes six bucks a month."
Right.
And then go back and change, or how does that work?
Yep. So they can, online, you can toggle back and forth. So some will do that. What we want to do is move people through, "33 million? Okay. Well, yeah, I guess we need a new school." And they, and they may go not sure at this point, like, "I'm not sure." Some will read ahead and then come back. So they'll read the whole thing before they respond. At the end of the day, what's going to happen when I come back with you in March is I'm going to talk about two lines intersecting. I'm going to say, "Here's your project priorities of your community based on the yes/no. We'll be able to give you some sense of, these are the things your community really supports. These are the things they're not so excited about." And then I'm going to say, "Here's how much money at this point your community can give you." And then we're going to say, "Where do those two lines intersect?" And it could be that, you know, it's 126 million, or it could be more than that, or it might be less. And we'll say, "Oh, it looks like that's too much, so we need to say, 'Do we just knock off those highest priority projects?'"
Thank you. Ms. Workman.
So I have a question about this, this piece, the elementary school. Two questions, actually. Is that the one that's near Schmidt Park? Is that worthwhile to have that piece of information on this at this time or not? Because I have had, I think, all of us got in at least one email concerning that.
Well, I think we'll have that information on the website, and we are going to, maybe I'll talk about it, February?
Fourth.
Fourth. We are having a community question and answer about the survey. So they can come in and ask any questions they want about the survey, and we'll respond to any questions that they may have. For example, like that one right there, where exactly, I can't tell on the map where that is, well, here's exactly where it is. So we, we thought it'd be important to provide that opportunity, and people can, we're going to livestream that one as well, so if they don't want to come physically, they can join that way as well.
And I think it is an FAQ going to be on the website as well?
Yeah.
Yeah. That'll answer some of those questions.
And then my, my second question, and this would really mess up your eight-page display. I noticed that at the end, you have the base bid, which is considerably higher than $33 million. It's a, it's a package. Is there anywhere on there where they say, "Well, what if I would just like the elementary school at $33 million because it's only going to raise my property taxes this much?" Or is that not the kind of detail that you need?
Hold that thought.
Okay.
All right? And we're going to come back to that once we get to the very end.
Okay.
But, yep, I like how you're thinking, and that's, the methodology will get us there.
So when you talk about doing the data analysis and the intersecting lines, are you able to know in the data why, for example, in this question, someone said no because of the cost, or because, for example, because we heard feedback, "I don't want to build a 720-size elementary school."
We won't know that in the feedback as far as the why. We may gather that in the comment piece. So what'll happen in the comments is that folks can, you know, if they start saying, "This is too big of an elementary school," we'll look for common themes, so things that are said over and over many times. So then that'll help us guide that piece of the discussion.
Ms. Amundson.
Thank you.
And to add on to that question, if the question said, "If not, why not?", instead of just comments and suggestions, would that elicit that, that type of information, which is something that the school board is going to need when setting the amount?
Sure.
If they're just concerned because it's going to tear down their child's school building in their neighborhood, and then they're not going to have a playground for you, that's a really different question than it's too expensive.
Right.
And then it's maybe something that we can allay their fears through education versus just a tax intolerance.
So one of the, we've heard that before with other projects. The other piece, though, is, you know, I don't want to limit comments to only the no, the folks that are no. So I want, you know, the, typically, we would just put comments slash suggestions. So the people that are no, they've got a comment, and if it's enough of a comment, they'll probably give it to us. Just something to think about as far as the reason we don't lead it there.
Could we say, "If not, why not?", and other comments, suggestions?
Yeah. If people, if the group is...
I, I feel very strongly personally about distinguishing the reasons for the no's so that we can address them and be as likely as possible to get this off the ground.
Yep. And hard to always quantify with comments, but we'll be able to see those reoccurring themes that come up in the comments. Thank you. All right. All right. So it's the same activity, the same drill that'll go through each of the, each of the projects. So after the building of the new school, we're going to talk about reconstruct Bishop and Longfellow Elementary Schools. So a bit of education on those schools. Bishop and Longfellow Elementary Schools are 59 and 68 years old respectively. Although the buildings have served the district well, major investments are needed at each school to address the following issues. Classrooms and support spaces, your kitchens, lunchrooms, libraries, and gyms are operating over capacity. Many of the major building systems, so plumbing, heating, electrical, are energy inefficient and have exceeded their service life and are in need of replacement. The school lacks proper air quality, insulation, acoustics, and natural light. So again, we want folks to know, we're just not tearing down perfectly good schools. And that due to the number of load-bearing walls and the single-story design, remodeling and expanding the existing school is not an option. Therefore, the facilities task force is recommending reconstructing, tearing down, and building new both schools. The new two-story schools would be designed to serve 720 students each. And again, each of these schools is estimated to cost $33 million. And we've asked the questions separately as far as, would you support a referendum to provide funding for Bishop as well as Longfellow? Go ahead.
So does that $33 million, will that include the teardown as well?
Yes.
Okay.
That's total project cost.
Okay. But for the new school, we don't have any teardown?
Right. You have additional site costs, and they start to wash each other out.
Okay.
So here, you have utilities that are already to the site, and you've got your sewer and water charges.
So those two things kind of balance each other out?
I asked him that several times during the drafting. Other questions?
When I first heard the idea of tearing down and rebuilding, I thought it was a very novel idea. And a small additional amount of clarification that just says this would meet the needs of increased population in the neighborhood to explain the fact that if not, we'd be busing kids out of their own neighborhood, is there some very short succinct way to include that little bit of information? I, I think this will be the first time that a lot of people hear that concept. It's been discussed commonly, but, but the idea of tearing something down and building it up again, if this is the first time they're hearing about it, since everyone's going to get the survey, I'm thinking maybe just a little bit more explanation, because it made sense to me once Mr. Holm explained why it makes sense.
Would it just perhaps be helpful to include the current capacity up in that kind of opening sentence, maybe?
I think just saying that, that the school will use to meet the needs of the population in that neighborhood, but now there's more kids in the neighborhood, we would have to bus kids out of the neighborhood. Am I getting this right, Mr. Holm?
Are we guarantee, I just want to be, I'm always cautionate of, when I, when we write this, is we want to make it simple enough.
Yes.
It's, it's good thoughts. I just don't want to say, "So then we won't bus kids, and then in four years, all of a sudden, you're bussin'?"
Which has been one of the hot topics of our task force work is, you're going to have to redraw boundaries, so the number you put at Bishop's capacity may be different because you're going to redraw the lines, and I think we would get in more trouble trying to do that now.
That's right. Can you think of anything else that could be said to clarify that thought?
I think we could add something that talks about the, those major reason for the reconstruction is to increase capacity for those areas of the district. That way, you're not talking about just the neighborhoods that they serve, but that region of the district, because then it helps out other buildings that are nearby that are over capacity as well. So I, I think we can come up with a significant, or a simple enough bullet point that talks about exactly what you're looking for is capacity is the driver of why we're doing this.
Let me ask just a process question as we continue through this. Would it be more helpful if we would email the superintendent or you as, as board members, suggestions, questions, whatever, especially suggestions, and you would process them then after presentation?
I think because of the timeframe that we want to get this out, we'd rather have the conversation here real quickly, and then we can define and maybe explain some of those pieces so that we can...
Okay. And you've already gotten some suggestions from some people that you have those in advance?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barlow.
So I believe, so the surveys also reflective of a desire of the board. We wanted to kind of steer clear from the boundary issues, and so I appreciate the clarity in terms of, these are aging facilities that really we can no longer support. And so for me, that really is the rationale, overriding rationale. And with the onsite reconstruction, there are some benefits, changes that will obviously occur, so.
Ms. Workman.
I, I have a question about this one sentence. Let's just pretend, actually, we used to live in the, in the Bishop neighborhood, so let's just pretend I still live there, and I have a student at Bishop, and I read this. "The schools lack proper air quality, insulation, acoustics, and natural light, and it's, oh my gosh, what is my child being subjected to?" So I'm, I'm kind of wondering if that can be phrased not as a negative, because then, you know, we're going to ask somebody who's in charge of facilities, "Please give us an explanation of why our indoor air quality is not up to code or whatever."
Could you use improved, perhaps? Could we?
I would just say, you know, we just passed a pretty large indoor air quality project for Bamber Valley, and the reason we're replacing that is for, there's the reason right there. So, and Bishop was on the docket for this coming summer, so it's pretty public that we aren't going to put, change the indoor air quality projects if there's not a need for it. So I, I don't think it's going to be too much of a shock. I mean, that's, we've done one of those at least every summer I've been here.
Well, and I, and I understand that point, but on the other hand, if I'm a resident, we'll take me out of Bishop now, that's reading this, and I don't have any of that background information, I could come up with a different perception of what's, you know, is this situation actually dangerous to kids right now? Maybe we don't want to go there, but just something to think about.
I would say that's pretty common text that's used in districts, and you do get the occasional individual that will question it.
Okay.
How bad is it? If it's not proper, is it bad, or is it just not up to current standards?
Okay.
So it's pretty typical language that's used during this.
And I will certainly defer to your experience in doing all of this, which is why you're here.
Good feedback, though. No, that's good.
One of the other questions that we got in some of our public feedback was, "How long will it be before we have to build more schools? So this takes care of our enrollment issues through what date? Is that appropriate to put information that we're building schools, will be covered through five years, 10 years, et cetera?"
I know that's in the information that we have provided. You're right, I don't think it shows up on the survey. The difficult piece, obviously, is if you grow faster than the predicted models are, it's going to be a shorter timeframe. I think I'd rather rely on that FAQ.
I agree.
To show up, because it's, it's one of those more finite details that some people will dig for, but others maybe not so much.
Good thoughts. All right. Moving on, page four. Oh, five? I lied. Look at that. Where are we? Page five?
Page five.
Page five. Across the halfway mark. All right. So then we have a new middle school also on that base plan. So we're going to show that that's in the southwest quadrant. And this project would build a multi-story school on purchased land in the southwest portion of the district to serve 1,200 students in sixth through eighth grade. And that's also going to include classrooms and support areas with flexible space for small group instruction, student collaboration, and project-based learning. This will have modern labs, studios to support class offerings in science arts, engineering, design, and family and consumer ed. It'll have a two-court gym and an auditorium, sufficient parking and proper separation of pedestrian and vehicle-bus traffic, and energy-efficient systems and lighting. So that new proposed middle school is going to cost $62 million. And then we have $2 million in improved school safety. So the district has updated many of the school entrances to current safety standards, and this $2 million would redesign the main entrances at those remaining schools to better monitor and control visitor access. Once complete, visitors at all Rochester Public Schools would be routed through a school's main office before gaining access to the rest of the school. So a yes/no there. And then this is the first time you'll see that tax tolerance table. So we let folks know that it's $163 million for that base plan. So remember, this was that recommended base plan. So we've got the projects listed there and the cost. This allows folks who've kind of breezed through to say, "Oh, my gosh, how did you get to $163 million in need?" It's relisted there. We let folks identify their assessed tax value of the property that they own. We've also worked with your financial advisor to put a tax calculator there, so you can go in and put the value of your property right in, see what it would cost you. And then we say, "Based on the tax impacts shown above, you know, would you support a bond referendum for the base plan?" And we'll use a scale of definitely yes to definitely no.
I would like to just share with the board, this was an area that we had some good discussion at the task force on, do we put the monthly impact or the annual? And the majority of the individuals felt annual was the number to use, because when you get your statement, it's your annual property tax, not your monthly. And I was unfortunately one of the ones that was on the other end, that preferred the monthly impact, but the majority ruled on that group, so we went with showing the annual impact.
Can I? Ms. Workman.
Yeah. Just give a counter to that. I know there are some people who do pay their annual tax payment in one payment, but the majority of people pay it in two installments, so I think I would probably be maybe leaning more in Superintendent Munoz's direction. But as far as the big scheme, I, I mean, I think it's a, it's a small thing.
Does the calculator have it, monthly?
I think it's annual as well, but we did discuss this at the task force, too, that we felt somebody could get out their phone and divide by 12 to figure out what their monthly impact was if they wanted to do that, so. But I'm pretty sure that the calculator does, gives it your annual.
Ms. Amundson.
So this says property tax increase, and we have referenda that are sunsetting that may coincide with when the new tax comes on. Is this an increase over what they're paying now, or what they would be paying once that sunsets?
What they're paying now, so that's what else is done.
It's the net increase after the old fall off and the new comes on.
After the old falls off and the new comes on.
So it's the, it's the net increase.
Okay.
As I look at this, I think it's this question we were just discussing, when I look at the far right-hand column, I'm thinking $35 a month. I, I don't know if there's 35 slash YR or something, if that would be, and maybe just old people that see it that way.
Yeah. Okay. So in addition to that base plan, then, we obviously know that there are still additional needs, but it's kind of, how do we, you know, we said these are the highest priority, but yet we have additional projects that could be included. So this is again how we kind of build that project, and that 163 is going to be the base number that we test. So we've got addressed remaining safety and security needs, so in addition to that $2 million project, we've got 4.4 million in addressing your school's door locking systems that need to be updated to allow for remote monitoring of all access points, and your emergency alarm systems need to be replaced to meet Americans with Disabilities Act code requirements. So we have that piece. We also are going to ask folks, should we be buying land now for future schools? Ongoing enrollment growth is expected in the district, therefore it is likely that additional schools will need to be built in the future. The district could purchase 80-plus acres of land now that would serve as a future school site. That's going to cost $1.5 million. Next, we need to build and update your high school's swimming pools, close your middle school pools. The swimming pools at the district's middle schools are all in need of significant updates, and are too small to service competition pools. Century High School is the only high school in the district without a competition swimming pool, and the diving well at Mayo High School's pool needs to be made deeper to meet code requirements. So the district is proposing to close the middle school pools, to save money, reduce annual operating costs, and repurpose that space, build a competition pool at Century High School, and deepen the Mayo High School pool diving well at a cost of $9.5 million. And then finally, reconstruct Churchill Elementary. So to ensure the district has enough elementary capacity, Churchill Elementary could also be reconstructed to serve up to 720 students in kindergarten through fifth grade. Churchill, like Bishop and Elementary School, is more than 50 years old, and has classrooms and support spaces, your kitchen cafeteria and gym, that are too small to support expansion. Additionally, that single-story design and the number of load-bearing walls does not allow the existing school to be remodeled and expanded. So again, another $33 million there for addressing Churchill Elementary. Feedback on page six?
Ms. Nathan.
I think one of the questions I sent in was, how to explain why Churchill isn't in the base plan? If we have capacity issues, where's that cutoff? I put Churchill in the base versus optional. I know that's hard to explain, but.
Yeah, and I think that's, we had many conversations about trying to add more information, and School Perceptions has reminded us that we need to keep this to a short succinct piece. Again, that'll show up in that, in that information. If people are to search further, they'll see what that capacity increase is, and where that falls relative to the, to the student increase. So I, I'm definitely following the advice of School Perceptions to make sure we keep this as short and succinct as possible.
And I think some of the conversation on why it got pulled out of the base is, as that dollar amount kept climbing and climbing and climbing, the task force and the POC group decided that we could probably address our capacity needs without expanding that, but let's ask, if we did expand it, that gives us more space for the future. But I, I think if I remember the conversation, there's just, you know, that base place then becomes almost 200 million. So it was more, that number got bigger, we thought, oh my gosh, let's take a really good look at this. Can we do something? And that's why we said, we don't want to take it totally off the table, but let's put it on as a additional question.
Oh, good for the FAQ. Ms. Workman.
I'd like to go back to the swimming pools, and of course, we haven't discussed that at all before tonight. Yes, we have. So the middle schools, when we remove the, when we remove the schools, when we remove the middle school pools, that's also making a program change for students who might not have access to learning how to swim at an earlier age than they would.
Yeah, we, we could bus them to the high schools. All three middle schools are a five-minute bus ride to the high schools, if we feel we need to continue.
So you're talking about classes?
Yes.
During the day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, and just since I've been here, we've put about $500,000 in the two middle school pools, just so they can be running. We just felt that we need to revisit, is the use that we use during the school day worth the operating cost of that many pools? And if we feel we still need to continue operating it for PE, we can always bus to the, to the high schools.
Right, and I think that, that explanation had not been given at our last meeting, so I appreciate the update. Thank you.
And a good piece for the FAQ as well.
Yes.
Ms. Amundson.
I assume the reason that we would be looking at purchasing land ahead of time for a high school is because it would save us money to do it now as land prices increase?
Well, later in the agenda, we're going to discuss that matter.
Because if that is true, I think it might be good to put that kind of reasoning into the question, because given it now, I would say no. As, as a citizen, I would say, well, what would be the benefit of now versus later?
Yeah, interesting or not, in, in September, I had an opportunity to speak in front of one of the coannis groups, it's something I do every year, and, and I gave them an update on the district and what's going on, and talked about the facility work, and I had a gentleman in the audience say, well, I hope you are looking at buying more land than you need right now, because it's going to be cheaper. I mean, I think a lot of people get that, but I think that's something that we can put in the question-answer section, that here's the rationale for looking.
Because otherwise, we might get an awful lot of notes.
But as I said, there's an agenda item on tonight that we're going to discuss that may even get that information out sooner.
Another important, important point is, we don't know if that land would be available five years from now, or 10 years from now. So, you know, as the city continues to grow, and if we have that opportunity, I think it's, it's something we should definitely look at seriously, for now.
Good feedback. All right. Nope, hold on, there we go. All right, two more projects that were in those additional pieces. Updating your sound and lighting systems in your high school auditoriums. So your lighting and sound systems in all three high schools are old, failing, and unable to meet the school's needs. As a result, the district is required to regularly rent equipment. Updated systems will provide better quality and energy efficiency. So we need $2.5 million for that project. And then finally, updating your high school outdoor athletic fields. The district would like to add turf at John Marshall and Century High Schools, as well as build concession storage and restroom facilities at Century. So that's a cost of 5.5 million. All right, and this is really what it all comes down to here, is this tax tolerance piece. That's all right. Screw down just a little bit more. I'm working on it. All right, so the cost of the, of that recommended plan is 163 million, and if all the additional projects outlined in the survey were completed, the total cost is estimated at $219.4 million. Given the cost, we may have to complete the projects in phases based on the community's priorities and their willingness to financially support the projects. So we're going to get a priority list, and then I'll be able to tell you what your tax tolerance is. So we say, the following table shows the projected tax impact for various bond referendum amounts. So we have on the low end there, your base plan, and then we're just going to move up in about $15 million increments, and then up to the all-in, 219.4 million. So we say, how much of a tax increase would you support through a bond referendum, assuming the projects included were acceptable to you? So do know that while the dollar amounts don't perfectly correlate with the projects, right, but we'll get them close. So somebody might say, I'm in for everything, but maybe not a $9 million project, or, oh, I'm in at about, you know, so they'll, people will go back and forth and look and kind of add things up, and then say, at the end of the day, they might have said yes, yes, yes to everything, and then they get here and go, it's like into the checkout when you found that nice outfit, right? And the shoes go back. So again, you end up with, you know, so folks will then respond and say, here's how much of a tax impact I'm willing to support.
All right, quick question. So that's what we would anticipate it to cost for today's dollars? And would that, would that, say that $35 a year for the $100,000 house? I'm just looking at the first line. By the time we pass, or, how do we, or do we need to incorporate into that any kind of a disclaimer of, this is assuming that your property taxes aren't adjusted by the city? Or would that $35 amount be static regardless of anything else that happened?
It is still an estimate. John, I'll let you.
No, I, I understand that it's, that it's an estimate, but.
So what, what would affect that tax impact is if your property value increases faster or quicker than what the financial consultant has assumed, then that tax impact would go down as you go forward. So this is based on their historical review of what your property values have done over the past few years, what they expect them to do over that next period. So their tax table generally has statements that this is an estimated value, just like this does, based on growth projections or property value increases.
So maybe perhaps for the FAQ, a little bit longer explanation of what this entails, because we can't put everything that we possibly know into.
Right.
A one-eight-page document. Okay, thank you for that, Kevin.
You bet.
And the tax calculator's on the bottom of this one as well, you just can't see it right now on the screen.
Ms. Selinger.
Thank you. Just a few follow-up. I can finally read my note way back when we started. If you do it online, is it something that can be saved and walk away, or do you have to do it all in one sitting?
Great question. And it'll say that when they first click on, it'll say that the respondent can leave and return, and so it will remain open until you hit that final submit button.
Super. And then earlier, you mentioned, when you're looking at things, if there's, you said something like, if there's not good representation, what, what does that mean? If we don't have good represent, if you don't see good representation of results from?
Yep, those folks over the age of 65.
Right.
So there's some subsets we look at that we say, all right, we want to make sure you've got at least this percentage of folks that we know that in a typical community, you know, when we look at folks at the polls. So then we would, you know, we, we would say the validity of the data.
Okay.
I can tell you that, you know, just our methodology of how we push the information out, the other pieces, we'll work with Heather as far as educating folks, the software, when we email the survey out to your parents and your teachers, and your, all your staff, really. Our software actually sends reminders to non-responders, so we, you know, we get a nice response right that way. So we've got some tricks up our sleeve, if you will, to ensure.
I just didn't know if you meant like you would seek out more of those people to get more responses.
We'll, we'll watch it, and then as, you know, as the window is open, we'll touch base with the district, and we might say, ooh, maybe we need to get a little article in the paper here, you know, be watching, send a, you know, include a photo, this is what it looked like. We love the people that call and say, I never received a survey, and then you hand them one, and they go, oh, oh, you know. Or if it's like my house, the teenagers get the mail halfway in the house, but not all the way in the house.
Right, like the backpacks.
And then my, my last one, and again, thank you so much. So a lot of the items we've talked to, talked, talked about, we talked about the FAQ, which a lot of falls onto Heather, and thankful to Heather for that. And I think that's a great plan, because, you know, even eight pages is a lot, and this is a lot of information that we've all been, you know, looking at, looking at, looking at, till 2:00 in the morning, or whenever. But can we do some reminders on the way through or at the end, like, please look for the FAQ on the district website? Because I just, that's not something I'm seeing in here currently.
Maybe add a footer.
A footer would be great.
Yeah, every other page footer. I like that idea.
Thank you.
Good thought.
Ms. Nathan.
I know that in the operating referendum, we had an inflationary factor from year to year. Is that the same for capital?
No. Whatever dollar amount you're, they approve, is that's, that's the amount you get. There's no inflation built in. In estimating the cost of projects, there's a factor built in that you're going to build this three years out, or have it complete three years out, how it's, that price is going to fluctuate.
The final referendum question will be for a dollar value, a total dollar value, not for a tax impact. And so that's where everything is, the line is drawn in the sand, so to speak.
Okay. Ms. Schlesner.
In regards to the website, something to think about is, versus typing in a 16-digit code that people just love to do, is look into a QR code for the mailing. So the younger folks who like to use their mobile devices can just scan a QR code, go to the webpage, be logged in with their unique ID.
Ms. Workman.
Back on page two, is, would this information be helpful to anybody? If you have school-aged children, please check all grade ranges that apply. So the first one is pre-K kindergarten, so I'm assuming, what, three- and four-year-olds? Are people going to think of, well, I have an eight-month-old child, but he's not school-aged yet? So are you trying to determine the total number of possible students, or?
No, just if they're like your current customers.
Okay.
So if you have school-aged kiddos, what age grades do they fall into?
Because, you know, future, future customers might also be aware, and so.
And it has, what that has to do with is the methodology of how the data, of how we determine what actually happens at the polls. So it has to do with parents of school-aged kids, their likelihood to show up at the polls, and then how, like what percentage they make up of the voting population versus those that aren't.
So if somebody wanted to fill this out, and they don't, well, they wouldn't have a school-aged child, so I guess they'd leave a blank. Never mind.
Okay. Ms. Amundson.
And I, I totally understand if this, this can't be squeezed into eight pages, but valuable information for us to have would also be current school, because if we had a lot of families saying, no, this is a really bad idea, and they were all in the Harriet Bishop neighborhood because it was their neighborhood being affected, but is that just way too much to squeeze into eight pages?
Great, great comment. And I think we started at one point, we had all your schools listed, and then we removed them, and we went to this quadrant of, just kind of tell us which area of the district that you live in. So in essence, we'll be, we'll be able to almost get you there, as far as, you know, then you might have people that are not within that boundary where their kids attend, but you could look at school-age elementary, I live in this quadrant of the district. So you'd have to, you'd have to decide. You could lose the quadrants and do the school, but then we don't get your general citizens, we'll, you know, we'll just get what municipality they live in and not the quadrant. So you all can decide, it can be either or, you just can't have both.
And I assume that for the validity, validity of the survey, that you don't want to have a different on-paper survey than you have online survey?
Exactly.
So we can't make it longer and more specific on that.
Right.
Ms. Schlesner.
A quick variant on what is being asked is if, when you go to the specific school questions, you already have, would you support a referendum, provide funding for reconstruction of Bishop Elementary? You'd really just need to add a checkbox there. Yes, no, not sure, has, have students enrolled at school, at this school? That, I think, would meet the request here. It's just an extra checkbox in each of those yes, no, not sure boxes.
Yeah, I don't know if I want, I understand what you're saying, is, you know, then we're really just looking at Churchill, Bishop, and Longfellow as the three schools. We certainly wouldn't want to give the perception to the general community that those parents have perhaps more, more pull than others. I mean, so I understand what you're getting at, I see this piece. Again, you know, if it's important for you to know what school parents are at, I can tell you, again, having done hundreds and hundreds of these, 90% of the time, in districts will say, tell us what school your kids attend, and at the end of the day, that information gets used maybe 5% of the time.
So if you were able to break down the respondents who said no, and you found that there were more no's in one quadrant of the city for that question, it would be a fairly logical assumption?
Um, I guess, could you make that correlation? You know, we could look at, what we'd have to do is break it down and say, okay, school-aged parents of elementary age in that quadrant, again, those are the things you're going to all do at 2:00 in the morning. Again, those are the things you're going to all do at two in the morning, when you're like, this software is awesome.
So process question. Is it your experience, your company's experience to not so much look at it at that level of, okay, school and more so along the lines of area? I'm thinking that the software is available to where if, with your company, and we could at some point after the survey actually probably mine down to overlay, okay, well, the, and it's tough to see the, well, southeast, these are the schools in southeast. And, but we really don't need it for the survey response. As a board, yeah, it might be nice to know that later, but for the referendum, probably not.
And sometimes we need that when, if it's, if it's close. You know, sometimes they'll say, you, you could get this, but your parents are going to carry it, and then we got to dig into those parents. Sometimes you may, we may end up with data that's very clear, like you, your community is all in.
Yes.
You know, but I can only hope when I show up in March, that's, you know.
Thank you.
All right, the last page is very exciting, it's a mailing panel. Well, then I'm going there. So one of the things that we, so we'll again let folks know that you've got that community information session on February fourth, where we're going to answer questions, and that the survey also is available in multiple languages to meet the needs of all of your residents. So we've got phone numbers for your various staff members that can support people of different languages.
Ms. Nathan.
Is there any correlation between the sixteen-digit code and the address that it's mailed to? So you don't know by zip code, a sixteen-digit code?
Nope.
Okay.
Yep, no, no correlation. Nope, we're going to send, we send codes to the printer, and so the printer's doing that, and so there, yep, there's no connection. Occasionally, someone will mail us the survey back, and they'll have cut out their address, you know, or like. But again, and that's the reason you hire an external company. So if I mail these back, they're going to Milwaukee, Wisconsin. So we will enter all the data in, the district will get it. But if you're curious at whose P.O. box wrote that, you know, what I really think the district should do is X, Y, Z, that you don't get those copies, the paper copies don't come back to the district. And again, that's why we talk about the fact that you're using a third-party company to gather the data and ensure validity.
So before I let that identifying by school go, technically, if you got a survey result that said, do you have children attending school in the district? And they said which quadrant they lived in, you could narrow it down to the schools in that quadrant?
Yep, assuming that they're not a choice school, or what's the?
Yeah, so you have, you have the choice schools, and then you also have the possibility that there are some schools right along those borderlines, there, where their borders, where their boundaries do extend one way or the other. But I think you would be able to get very close with the quadrant piece and the questions that are at hand.
And well, that's, that's good thinking. The fun fact that I'm going to talk more about when I come in March, but I'll just clue you in on right now, is that parents actually make up twenty-five percent of folks at the polls. And so it's our general citizens. So if I check no to, I don't work for the district, and no, I'm not a parent of school-aged kids, those are the folks that really determine what happens at the polls. So while this is all important and good information, that's the group that at the end of the day, those are the folks that really determine your tax tolerance and your project support. Which is again, one of the reasons why we lifted the schools early on, when we were kind of looking at space and thinking quadrants and those types of things, given the size of your community.
Thank you, other questions?
Thank you, Sue.
All right, so our goal, I think, is to take the feedback from tonight, to take the feedback we received via email today from, I think, a few of you. And we'll work on that, and our goal is to get something off to print end of day tomorrow.
If I may, just to be clear, then you're considering the input we provided.
Yeah.
You're not guaranteeing that the input we provided will be reflected in the survey?
Right. If that's okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
I want to quickly, quickly readdress agenda item three point oh-two, that's our committee assignments, for a short discussion, and hoping we're going to, can come to a quick consensus on this. It's about when school, or when committee assignments are determined. Currently, board members are appointed to committees by the board chair in August. And typically, the board chair works with committee members and tries to get a good fit for each member. So their appointment is from August through August. Sometimes they carry on for a second or a third year, but at other times, all the assignments change in August. Policy states that the board chair will appoint, but it doesn't say when. Now, this August to August usually works pretty well, except every two years, when we tend to get new board members on. And then we have new board members stepping into, to the board committee assignments of recently passed. I don't mean as in dead, but they've left, the board members. Sometimes that's a good fit, and sometimes it's not. So then they're in this new appointed position for about eight months. We could continue with the system we have now, where board members are appointed in August. Or we could switch and have them appointed in January. This is not an action item, we're not going to vote on it, but I'm wondering if we can just have a quick discussion and come up with consensus.
I have a question, and if you can't answer it, perhaps Ms. Edgar can. And that is, which committee assignments or which committees operate on a January one through December thirty-first, as opposed to the school year? Do we have any like that anymore? Okay.
And we can have another discussion maybe in February about the committees that we have, because there are some that the board determined we wanted, there are others that are mandated by policy, and there are others that we just sort of do. So we can have that discussion later. But pros, cons of August to, August versus January to end of December.
I think by this time of the year, the relationships have been built by the board members who are already on the committees. So to switch it up halfway through the year, you might lose the institutional knowledge you've gotten from being on the committee. The other question I have, though, is if a board isn't working for a board, a committee isn't working for a board member because they're meeting at the wrong time, or, you know, you find you can't make the meetings, when does, when does that get addressed?
Well, typically, what?
Nothing.
Yeah, no.
Never.
Well, I think that's, the way it's been done in the past, you, the chair asks for each board member to say, what committees would you like to be on? And, you know, that, you could ask when these meet and all that. And then I think in the past, the chairs always tried to match people up. You know, I, my, my thought on this is that I think it's good that board members aren't on the same committee year after year, even though maybe that scenario you prefer. I think this is an opportunity for you to learn different parts of the system. So when you're on different, a different committee every year, you get to learn more about the system versus, well, I love talking to students, so I want to be on student school board my entire term. Well, my recommendation would be do one committee a year, and then go experience something different so you get a better feel of the entire school system.
Mr. Barlow.
And then it's probably important to also consider that a lot of the committees that may currently be filled by board members aren't necessarily committees that are required by policy.
Right.
So maybe in our study session, we can maybe take a look, see at that, and, and then better address the assignment and flow of, well, what happens if the board member isn't able to fulfill their service requirement?
Ms. Amundson.
Would a simple suggestion like allowing board members to trade between themselves address the question of board member availability if they find that their schedule won't allow? If I just said, Ms. Selinger, would you mind if I switched with this one? Or would you be interested in taking this responsibility from me and delegating the ability, rather than the board chair assigning, delegating the ability to swi, switch or swap with other board members?
Ms. Selinger wants to answer that.
Yes. I might give up my, no. Yeah, to that point, I think we've done different things in practice in terms of maybe unavailable to meet, to attend one committee meeting. Sometime, past practice was to send out an email to the whole board, hey, I can't make it to this meeting, can anybody cover it? I've also had the situation where a meeting has been, you know, I've been on a committee, and the schedule has been set for the year, and I, it's not going to work for me. I did, you know, at that time, approach one person. I, I do feel like any big changes probably should go through the chair, or, or at least give the opportunity so it's not, for transparency's sake, that, you know, it's open to anyone to, to take that on if so, if they so choose, as opposed to, I'm going to go to the person, I want to switch with the person who's got the committee I want.
Sure.
That's just my suggestions.
So when I'm, yeah, Mr. Schlesner.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with Don, right? I think this would be a good discussion to have at the study session, work some of that stuff out. Because I know, as I reflect on this last year, there were a few committees that, of my four, I think three of them met at the same time.
So that's, that's.
So we need that information.
Yeah, but what I would like to do right now, though, is just to decide, are, are we okay for the time being with continuing with the practice we have now, August to August? And then the suggestion we've had, because the dates, the timing of this is not set in board policy. Suggestion I've had is that if you're on a committee that's not working for you, you go through the board chair and say, I would like to see if we can switch. But we, otherwise, we just keep the, the pattern that we're using at this time. Does that work for people?
Sure.
And the board chair has just said, he would be delighted to have a number of conversations with people who are disgruntled about committees. Give you his phone number, both his cell and his home phone number. Three o'clock in the morning is fine.
So just a question, a process as well for our incoming board chair to make a decision? I don't think we need to have a two-hour study session on this, but maybe perhaps it's just a regular agenda item.
Have an agenda item in February, maybe. Okay, good, thank you for that.
Well, just point, point of clarification.
So close, yeah.
Well, the suggestion in terms of study session is we have a session that will be scheduled anyway, and rather than encumber a board time with the discussion of it, we could actually do it during that scheduled time, but whatever works.
To have more than one or two things on, yeah.
I mean, what I would suggest, so you don't have to have a, sometimes it's challenging to find schedules for study sessions. We could provide every board member a brief description of the committees and let you know when they meet. And then you could, as we've done in the past, just say, I would like to be on these three committees, submit them to, to Don. Don looks and tries to match people up. I mean, this way you have, you know when they're going to meet, what the, for example, one of them is, you only meet if somebody challenges one of the books that we have in our school. And then that group gets together, and we need a board member on that group according to policy. So it's not a set meeting time, but majority of them are a set, you know, monthly or by whatever. So I think we could provide you that information, so you could decide if it fits in your schedule, and then let you know what kind of the expectations are for that particular committee.
Yeah, and that's pretty much actually what we've been doing in the past in August, is, is saying, this is what's going to work for me. So what we're going to do at this point is stick with the committee assignments we have, unless there's a problem, unless we feel uncomfortable. At that point, we will talk to Chair Barlow, and he will fix. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Good. Okay, thank you. Seven point oh-one, Minnesota legal compliance contract with interested officer. This is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will provide this information for us tonight.
Great, good evening, Chair Marvin, soon-to-be Chair Barlow, Superintendent Munoz. I'll be real quick on this item. We agreed to do this with our auditors, at least when we're switching board members, so that we make you aware of the conflict of interest policy. Back in twenty thirteen fourteen school year, we entered into a contract with a school board member who also owned a business. We paid his business seven hundred and sixty dollars to do a service for us, it was really not a, a big deal. But we did forget to follow state statute and bring that before the board and get formal approval of that. So what I'm asking you is if you own a business, your spouse owns a business, your child, your parents, your siblings, come and talk to me and just make sure that I'm aware of that. And then annually, I'm going to send you a written disclosure so that you do that, and then our auditors will double-check that. Since the thirteen fourteen school year, we've gone through four school years with no issues on this policy. So just wanted to make you aware of that.
Great, thank you. Seven point oh-two, transportation proposal update, this is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to have Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance will remain, and Jeff Capper will also join them. Just to kind of set this up, you know, we've been going through the RFP process, and, and we put out one for a two-tiered busing system like we currently have, and then a one-tiered busing system. Tonight, we're really not bringing the RFPs to the board and our recommendation on which one to accept. Tonight, we just want to share some numbers with you. Based on the data that we've looked at, my recommendation would be that we do not consider a one-tiered system anymore, just because of the, the cost. But we wanted to share the information with you, so you can get to see what a one-tiered system would cost the district. Our plan is to inform the two dogs that are still in the race, or the two companies that are still bids that we're looking at. We're going to reach out to them one more time and say, what's your final best offer? And then the plan is to bring a recommendation to you at a, are we doing the next, first February meeting? February fifth meeting? To say, here are the two RFPs, this is our recommendation that we accept this offer. But tonight, we just want to share with you what we have at this time. So I'll turn it over, I don't know who's going first.
I can, I can.
All right, Scott.
Just to summarize again what the superintendent said, we, we have been in talks with the city of Rochester, Rochester Public Transit, doing a study for about the past year or so, regarding them looking into allowing us to utilize city transportation for middle school and high school students that live within the city, using some existing routes and also creating new routes that the city would create, and buying new buses. And we've been involved in that study, like I said, for about a year. And the city is still engaged in that study, but they're, they're kind of on hold here, waiting for us to see if this is something that we still want to support as far as a single tier, because we really aren't quite sure what the cost would be yet. We do know that an estimated cost to the city for, as far as ridership for our middle and high school students using the city lines buses would be about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And these, these aren't exact numbers, but these are just estimates that we receive from the city. In addition to that, the, the city would still have to go out and finance or, or get money from the fed, federal government and the state in order to purchase buses. And I think they're looking to purchase about twenty-two buses. And if they aren't allowed, if they can't procure that, those funds, then we would have the option to assist them as a district to buy buses, and all these other variables that come into play. But, so there really aren't any solid, concrete numbers regarding that particular part of the study. But the one thing that is probably the most solid is that five hundred and sixty thousand dollars that it would cost us to go to that, that we would be paying the city to, to utilize that transportation. What we didn't know then was what it would cost to still be able to provide transportation for all the other students that wouldn't be riding on the RPT city bus lines. And so we created a, we, our contract was running out with first student, so we decided that we were going to go for a five-year contract, put out a request for proposal with two different phases. One would be to maintain the current tiered system as it is for the next five years and get a cost. And then the next base bid would be for doing the current year for this coming year, nineteen twenty, and then potentially a single tier, what those costs would be for the general education and special education. education and special education transportation provided by one of those contractors for the remaining four years. And so, we put that proposal out in September, and we are currently in negotiations, so we're not, we're not publicly talking about specific dollars, because, but we do have a, a general idea. What we found, based on the proposals that are coming in, is that for a single-tiered system, well, let me back up. We're gonna be paying more for our transportation, starting next year, no matter what, just because it was a prior contract, I think it was a four-year, is that correct? And, and so now, the initial indications are the costs are gonna be anywhere from eight to 12% higher now for next year, whether we're in the current tiered system or a single-tiered system. So, we're gonna be paying more. And that estimate is about, roughly about a million dollars, that we're gonna be paying more next year. And that's gonna impact us for the next five years. So, that's a budgetary consideration that we have to take into account. When we got the results from the current tiered, where they were gonna bid the current tiered, as I explained, it's about a million dollars more a year. When we got the base bid B coming back for the single-tiered, the cost for the general education and special, or the general education was about in that same eight to 12%, but then the special education costs, if we were gonna go single-tier for those four remaining years, to get every, all the students to school about the same time, the increase in cost is a significant increase. In, it's, it's about a million, another million dollars a year for that. And then, but that's just for what the contractor provides for special ed. We also do our own special ed transportation as well, both in-house and with private contractors outside of the two companies that put in proposals. And when we added all that up, in order to get all those students, that we determined it's gonna take about 25 to 27 more routes for special ed students, increase. We currently have about 33, and it would take about another 27, so our costs would almost double for special ed. And when you add up all those numbers, real roughly now, there's, there's nothing locked in, like I said, we figured it'd be about $6 million to go to a single tier. Now, that's, a lot of that cost is special education costs, and there are some, it is, we do get reimbursed to some extent, but I'll let John explain what the concerns are on that piece, since he's far more knowledgeable about that.
Sure. Our, our problem right now with the state's special education formula as it is written is there's a growth limit per year, and basically, we're limited to growth in total costs, that's teachers, paras, everything, and special ed transportation, about 4.6% per year. So, there would be no way we could add in another $6 million of costs and expect to be reimbursed for that. We would get very little, if any, of that cost. So, in other words, the general fund's gonna be paying for that $6 million increase.
So, here we are back, looking for some guidance from you, providing you this information. And I can't emphasize enough that we still are in negotiations and we're hoping to get some favorable results there still. But, we are looking for your input as far as the single-tier piece, so that we can stay up with the city as well and keep everybody informed and, and open on what your thoughts are on that process as well.
Ms. Workman.
I, I have a question for you, Mr. Carlson.
Sure.
So, on the special education piece, my understanding from my work at the delegate assembly was that there used to be two pots. There used to be a special ed transportation pot and an everybody else transportation pot. So, do you know, since those two pots have basically been combined, is that safe to say? Are we still getting the same amount that we did when it was, special ed was its own pot? Or are we losing? Or, or is it that cap that is really the issue?
So, I think if you ran the math, we'd be doing a little bit better on the special ed transportation piece of it than what we were doing before.
Okay.
However, again, because it's capped the whole bucket, so to speak, we're not gonna get anywhere near what it's gonna cost.
Okay.
The big question, I guess, and, and this isn't so much about the finances, the whole purpose for this exploration was to provide a later start time for our secondary kids. Do we have a Plan B to still have a later start time?
Well, I, I...
Is that a different discussion?
I can address that. What we, we're hoping is that this would, would turn out that we could afford to do it this way, and it's looking like we're not gonna be able to do that. So, I think we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board, and it's not as simple as just flipping the schedules, 'cause if we did that, we would start picking up kindergarten students at 6:30 in the morning, and 6:30 in the morning, winter months is probably not a good time to have little ones out and about. So, what we, actually, I said this on the radio, I don't know if it's this week or last week, but I was on the radio recently, I don't remember what's the day now, but, 'cause they asked that, and I said, well, we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and see if we flip the two, but also push back that elementary start time back, maybe eight, 8:15. But then, we have to look, how does that play out at the secondary level? That's just gonna push them later into the day, then you start looking at extracurricular activities and everything else that, that goes. So, that's gonna have to be our next, next look, is can we flip, push it back a little bit later? How does that play out? I mean, what's the dismissal time for secondary students? And, you know, even as it is now, we have some students, unfortunately, that miss part of their last period of the day to go to an away game or to go to ice, you know, their ice time is at this time and you're gonna have to go. So, how is that gonna play out if we do the flip and, and go 8:15, 8 o'clock, and then nine something for secondary start time? And what does that mean, their end time is? So, I think that's the next thing we're gonna have to look at and see if there's, by doing that, can we make it work?
Mr. Barlow.
So, originally, well, I shouldn't say originally, but at, at some point in time, the school starts, start times kinda drove this initially. Now, separate from that, transportation costs, without any consideration of start of school times. And, and that this is informational, you're advising us at this time that we're going to see a significant increase, and that will impact the general fund. And there's really nothing we can, are you looking for guide, what, what are you looking for?
I guess what we're, I mean, since this is not a briefing or an action item, we're looking for consensus. Our recommendation is that we communicate with the city and RPD that we are no longer able to continue pursuing down this route, using city buses. That's kinda what we're looking for guidance tonight, and then we'll just continue having conversation with our two, two providers about, what's your best deal you can give us with a, a two-tiered system? And then, we're gonna have to approve one of those bids, and then, a side note, we'll look at, if we flipped, how could we make that work so we can get a later start time for secondary students with a two-tiered busing system?
Mr. Schlesner.
A couple of questions. Do we know which school districts in the state of Minnesota have successfully flipped school start times and how they handled that? And I'm curious why we tell the city to stop the, their piece before it is completed. Is it cautioning us anything to let them complete their endeavor?
For me, ethically, I don't think we should tell them we're still interested in it, and they should continue putting time and money into pursuing this if we know we can't afford to be a player anymore. I mean, that's kinda what I'm thinking, 'cause they're gonna have to check with the, the federal and state to see if they can get the funding to buy the buses, and they're waiting to take it to the city council to, to get permission to take that next step, is to reach out to the federal and state to get funding to buy the buses. I don't think we should have them do that if we know we can no longer be a player in this process, because we can't afford the five, six million dollars that it would cost, I guess it'd be five million to, to do that annually.
Ms. Workman.
Yeah, on, on page four in the attachment on the, on the contract, there's, there's some information there concerning the, the base bids for the two different areas, and year one and year two. And I noticed that on, on the base bid two, the, there, there would be two tiers the first year, and option for one tier years two through five. Would there be any flexibility in the contract to say, we might need that one tier for two years? Or is that like rebidding everything? Because I think that would be helpful, helpful information to have, because at this point, I don't feel like I have enough information yet as to make any kind of a, even a consensus on whether or not we should just, you know, this is just now dead on arrival, or if there's any more information from the city that we can get that might inform us a little bit more, because, yeah.
Just so I understand your question.
Yes.
You've mentioned going to a single tier in year three instead of two, is that what you...
Well, is a possibility.
As a possibility?
As a possibility. And, and I understand, I, I certainly understand the costs of this. But, as usual, we are at the mercy of the legislature. And to make a decision that says, now we're gonna be locked into this, when the legislature magically makes it so it's not quite so bad, because these school bus costs are rising across the state. It's not just Rochester. In order to get drivers, you have to pay them more, and so therefore, costs is more. So, this isn't a situation that's unique to Rochester, it is statewide, and it has a great deal of interest statewide. And I understand that we work through MS, AMSD for our lobbying, but at the same time, it certainly doesn't hurt our local legislators to hear from us and to say, this is why this is really important for our students, and this is how we can, how you can help us, enable us to do this financially. Because right now, we're, we're really kind of in a box with the dollars. Okay, I mean, that was sort of a speech, but...
I can talk a little bit about that. I, I see where you're going, but if, if you're asking me, bottom line is, we want more money, more money in our general fund, is what we, we need. I mean, okay, if they give us more in transportation, my experience has been, in the 30-plus years I've been educating, oh yeah, we'll give that to you, but we'll take it from this pot.
Right, right.
It's not like, we're gonna keep this pot the same and we're just gonna increase this pot. You know, in a good year, we got a 2% increase, in a good year for the state. We have another good year now, we'll see, I don't anticipate more than 2% increase in our general fund formula. Bottom line is, we have to double our special ed routes, which is a lot of money.
Right.
Either if it's next year, two years down the road, three years down the road, that doubling, the need to double your special ed routes is not gonna change. And if anything, that number is gonna just get more expensive. And we could ask for just a two-year price.
Which is...
And then, do another RFP two years later. But you get a better deal when you ask for a five-year commitment, and I get it from their point, they know they have us locked in for five years, so they can get us a better deal. But if we say, we only want a two, we can do a new RFP for two years, but I anticipate that cost is just gonna go up a little bit, because they don't have a five-year commitment from us.
This is so rarely it's boiled down to, do we wanna give up on later start times for five years?
Yeah.
Well...
I personally, I'm not in favor of that.
I wouldn't say that. We could, we could still talk about time, like Superintendent Munoz talked about. That could happen during that time, I think.
And what do other districts do with the special ed costs? Or is Rochester just sort of unique in that we have more kids with more needs who have to have the transportation? 'Cause that's...
Most districts our size have a tiered system like we have. So, we, we were kinda going more, like your little rural districts are more single-tiered. And we, we were heading more to try to do the single bell time, more like a Byron or Dover Yoda or something like that. Most big districts are tiered to maximize the use of their bus.
And I would...
Ms. Workman.
I would say that the, the advantage that those districts have, for example, Edina was one of the, the first schools to do this some 25 or 30 years ago, is that they don't have the issues of the geography and the wide length that our buses have to travel to get kids to and from school. So, South Washington County, which we are always compared with, has a much smaller geographical footprint, which explains why their transportation costs are so much less than ours.
That's right. You know, when you look at it, districts our size, there's no one that's 218 square miles, no one.
Ms. Nathan. Oh, Ms. Nathan, and then Ms...
So, I, I know we've gotten a lot of feedback from our community about wanting the later start times, and I also know from our work with the PTA that it is a statewide issue, that there was legislation introduced last year in the legislature that we're anticipating that's gonna be introduced again, where people are pushing for a statewide later start time of 8:30 or later for all school districts. So, this information will be very helpful when speaking to our legislators to say, the impact of that blanket legislation, you know, in our district and many districts would be the same kind of, you know, negative impact. So, that's one thing to keep in mind as we go forward, that the movement isn't going to stop. So, given that, you know, this came under the agenda as a transportation piece, and there may be many people out there who are surprised that we're talking about its effect on the start time proposal. Can we put together an FAQ or something specific to how this impacts the school start times and where we're at on that program decision? And, and make it available for people who might be interested in it from that perspective?
Mr. Schlesner.
Oh. You have a question first?
Oh, thank you. If we are successful in redistricting to increase walkability, will that have any impact on the total co, I realize it will have an impact, but will it have enough of an impact on the total cost to make it more feasible to look at it again? Or are we really locked in based solely on the special ed transportation cost?
I, I mean, I don't know how, without running routes, I don't know how you could figure that out. I, it could have some, but I would probably go to the bank saying it's not gonna save us $5 million.
That's what I was afraid of.
And just, just a piece of information that they didn't share, but we even worked with another consultant to look at our special ed routing and say, look at, can we do it more efficiently to save money? And came back, said, here's what we'll do recommend. Oh, that's interesting, that's what we're doing. So, I mean, we tried to check every angle we could to see, okay, we knew special ed was gonna be a factor, can we find a better, let's get an outside person, outside set of eyes to look at it, to see if we can be more efficient to try to cut back costs, and they didn't. And, and back to one of your previous questions, we are a little unique. And when you're a large district surrounded by a bunch of smaller districts, especially in areas of special ed, we get a lot of really challenging, I shouldn't say challenging, that have severe needs that they can't serve at their, in their small district, so then they come to our school. Just an example, we this year received a six foster children from a long ways away from here. It's an hour bus, bus ride one way to pick up the kids. They open enrolled, and we have no say. I mean, if you wanna go after the legislation, that's a law that could change right there. We had no say. We said, yes, okay, we'll take them. We know we gotta bus in the morning to pick them up. One's a preschooler, so we gotta bus that preschooler back in the afternoon, and then we gotta go take the kids back at the end of the day, and it's an hour trip one way. So, it, I mean, we are unique, that we have not a lot of little thing, special situations like that. We have some that just add cost to our, our special ed transportation.
Mr. Schlesner.
Revisit a couple of numbers. You said, no matter what, costs are going up. What was that number if we left everything the same? What number was it that were going up pretty much no matter what? And the second number is, is what was the second number for if we went to a one-tiered system? I'm essentially looking for, what's the difference of, we do the same, or we do something unique?
We're still in negotiations, but we're looking at about a $900,000 increase from this current year to next year, to keep everything the same. Single tier, and this doesn't include all the extra sped routes, we're looking at about a $1.8 million increase to go to single tier, but then you have to add in all the other sped routes and everything too.
The, we have two... The, we have two companies that we use vans for, so adding those two up in pairs that, we figured worst-case scenario where we'd have to put a pair on every one of those vans, that's about $4 million when you add those two together.
And we have to do some of that now anyways, right? So, so again, I really think it's important-
Now, additional four is the extra special ed van routes that we'd have to add to go to a one-tiered system.
So the transportation cost difference was really $900,000, and then the special ed pair is the $4 million.
Yeah.
So that's still less than six, that's about 4.9, but-
Ms. Workman.
Are we up to the legal limit of walk lines? For example, what the state requires in terms of how far away students can be, and I'm, I really hesitate to throw that out, and I certainly wouldn't ask you a question of how much money might that save, which might be very little.
Yeah, that was one of the questions you asked. We did not work on that one, because basically Jeff would just have to reroute, do the reroutes to figure out a cost, by pushing, I think we're a half mile less.
The, it's two miles is the state statute, so we're there for everybody.
Okay. It's two miles for everybody.
Two miles K-12. So that would be a challenging situation for elementary.
Yeah.
So this is really, really disappointing. I wish you could just go back and come back with, with better news, but it appears that the situation we're in, it's millions of dollars additional to go to a one-tiered system, and I just, I can't see that we can support that, much as, and I think we just need to keep looking at it, another way to get later start times. Ms. Linger.
Mr. Caffers, can you say more about, we'll still look at that, were you just talking about just flipping?
Some, some kind of a bell time adjustment to, to help, yes.
Can't you just say flipping? You have to say bell time adjustment, right? Because you're that kind of guy. Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily be a one-on-one flip, but adjusted, okay, thank you.
There, there might be some, some flex that we can work on, and again, we have to look at the end-of-day stuff. I mean, there's a lot to look at, but I think it's worth looking at.
I appreciate that you say it's worth looking at, because I don't want to like, go out in the hall in tears thinking, oh my gosh, this is never going to change. My other question, dare I raise it, so we're talking about a $900,000 increase, but that's just next ye, is that just next year, or is that?
That was just next year, and then we got a more moderate increase probably, probably was more inflationary from there. It's, it's that large jump of trying to raise wages in one household.
It's the labor market to try to get staff what we got.
Completely understand it and appreciate safe, well-trained bus drivers for our students, but just thinking about John getting any sleep as he starts to work on budget, thinking we're going to be paying almost $1 million more-
Right.
-minimum.
Right.
That's got to come from-
Correct.
Somewhere, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Barlow.
I just wanted to circle back around. Director Nathan had raised the point of opportunity regarding FAQ, and I just wanted to make sure that that was perhaps something which was heard, and maybe something which will result in some action. I don't want to misinterpret Superintendent, you're nodding your head, yes, meaning that it will happen, or just acknowledging that she had commented.
No, I think maybe the perfect time to put it on the website is when we come back to you for formal action on accepting one of the RFPs, we can put on our website an explanation why we, the board voted to go to, continue with a two-tiered system, and at that time, what, you'll actually see the numbers that they talked about. They'll be in board docs as well.
Anything else? Thank you.
So this was not a voting, but is the consensus that we continue pursuing a two-tiered system and maybe looking at either a flipping or some type of adjustment to-
Adjusting bell times.
Try to get a later start time for secondary.
I think we absolutely want to continue pursue options.
Okay. I've seen more head nods on staying with the two-tiered, and then saw a known nod, but I only saw one or two of those, so looks like the majority is, consensus is that we stay with the two-tiered, see what we can do with one more meeting with the two companies, and then we'll bring a actual proposal to you in February.
And I know we'll have people ask, when will we know about alternatives for flipping?
Well, I don't want to commit to a time, because the gen item we just talked about has really consumed a lot of our time, and that's going to be our, our main focus is getting that up and running, and because without that, I'm not sure what we're going to do, but we'll, we'll try to get it done as quickly as possible, but it's something, as Jeff said, it's going to take, take some time to, you know, if we tweak it here, let's see how that plays out, and then obviously, we're going to have to pull in some secondary people, because that later time's going to impact their world as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
7.03 and 7.04, these are closed sessions to discuss property and negotiations. These are action items.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3, I make a motion to move into closed session to discuss potential real estate transactions, and immediately following, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.03 subdivision 1, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
It's been moved and seconded to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. We are in recess at 7:46 PM.
Okay.
We are reconvened at 8:26 PM. Oh, 7.05, thank you. Ratification of 2018-2020 Service Employees International Union Student Nutrition Services Employees Collective Bargaining Agreement. This is an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby ratify the 2018-2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Rochester Public Schools and the Student Nutrition Services Employees.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes, and, we're not doing this at 7:06, okay? We are adjourned at 8:27 PM.